Fletch allegiance, please.
Fletch allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no redeeming justice for all.
Paul Morton roll call stepping on my right.
Councilperson Josh Earn.
Councilperson Brad Thayer.
Mayor Jimmy John King, councilperson Craig Anderson.
Councilperson Jeremiah Old.
We're all here now, we're gonna start with some presentations to start the meeting. Once again, the city has received some awards from different departments. The first one I got tonight is a certificate of commendation for the wastewater treatment facility. It's an operational award presented to the city of Sturfield wastewater treatment plant and its staff. Jeff, are you here to accept this award?
I guess so.
Mark, you got the camera? It's in recognition of exceptional compliance with Minnesota pollution control agency. Your dedication to protecting Minnesota's waters are duly recognized and appreciated by the state of Minnesota and all the people in Sturfield. Jeff, thank you very much for your effort out there. Thank you. Facility running and keeping operations.
That's worth it, Jeff.
Next item. We're gonna recognize someone who gets very little recognition. He gets his less and less area to sit on every year. Not only from the mayor, maybe some of the council members, but he has to handle complaints from all the citizens in town. And he does never get the recognition he deserves. And that's for Bill Schimmel, city administrator. He's going to receive an International City County Management Association honor. Thirty-five years of service to local government. William Schimmel, will you step up, please? Maybe we can turn some lights off.
Yeah. Both ends get worn down.
The glare isn't so bad.
He probably will.
He will go. Go on your award.
Keep my smile natural.
Bill, say something. Bill Schimmel, Bill, be one of your Schimmels.
No, just the half show.
It's your chance for some recognition, use or...
We've all been doing a great job here, when you got a great team to work with, with all of my fellow employees. No matter where on the spectrum they are and what department they're in. And obviously, the council makes it a great place to work and keeps us all going, I guess. And I think I can speak for all of us. Our hearts are in this. And we want you all to look good, and we want our community to look good. So hopefully, we can keep that going.
You're doing a great job, Bill. Thank you very much. Frank, we have nothing for you today. Looking for approval of tonight's agenda? Any additions from staff? On the table? Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
We've got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let it carry. Approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's also approved. That'll take us on to finance and budget. We have the council payable and the additional council listing. So questions, direct them to, excuse me, finance director, Carla.
I do see why the wastewater treatment facility got, gave us an award after a fifty-nine hundred dollar annual fee.
Pacing all the right people, though.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That'll take us into motions and general business. First item under general business is a variance request. Variance request at two oh seven Third Street Southwest. Jeff Byrne is requesting a two-foot variance for the required sum of sixteen-foot side yard setback per section thirteen thirty point zero five development requirements. The plan he has is to tear down the current house and build a townhome. The two-foot variance would result in each side yard being seven and seven feet and one quarter inch from the property line. Planning commissioner Public Hearing has recommended approval of variance. Planning commission member, do you have anything to add or say?
No, everything looked good on the drawings that she has got. We approved it.
Any questions or discussion from the table? Council action request, and then would it be approved, the two-foot variance as requested? We have a motion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Let it carry. Next item is another variance request. Five oh two Bryn Court Southeast. It's at the Arnold household. They're requesting thirteen-foot variance for required fifteen-foot setback as per section one thirteen seventy-five point seventy-five, sub B one. The property is located in the corner of Bryn Court Southeast, Fifth Avenue Southeast. The home sits seven feet from the property line. Orders require that the fence be placed fifteen feet from the property line, which you see is impossible. They are proposing a four-foot chain link fence to start five foot out from the back of the house and extend to the rear property line. Planning commissioner Public Hearing, they recommend approval of the variance. Anything to say about this, Josh?
No, everything looked good.
This is just for a fence, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, cuz I was just looking at their drawing, I couldn't figure out. It shows the house and it shows the garage. And then behind, so there must be a deck or something behind the garage ways or something?
No, that's the perimeter of the fence, the little dash twine.
No, see that, what is that, square sixteen by ten?
Yeah, it's a shed.
Both are sheds. Looking at that, trying to see it on the...
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the variance as requested?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let it carry. The next is a conditional use permit, four oh five South Main Street, Loonings. Let's see. Loonings are requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a fence in a B one zone as per section thirteen seventy-five point twenty-seven subs C one. Fence will not be around the whole perimeter of the yard, but just the east section that borders his neighbor's backyard. Planning commission is recommending approval of this conditional use permit. The P and Z board was all in favor of the answer to this.
Yes.
Any questions or discussion on this one from the table? Hearing none. Would look for a motion to approve the conditional use permit as requested?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let it carry. Next, under motions and general business. Construction project, alley north of the high school. At the end of the two thousand twenty-one year, council approved collaborating with Sturfield High School to redo the alleyway that is adjacent to the northwest parking lot and the parking spaces. This is from Sixth Avenue Southwest to Fourth Avenue Southwest during the two thousand eight. CIP, the water main on the short stub of Fourth Avenue, it wasn't approved. The alleyway has significant alligator cracking and the guardrails are deteriorating. City engineer Obernolte estimated the project was going to be a hundred and ninety thousand. This was to include a ten percent contingency reclaiming, paving, and replacing guardrails. In that original estimate was thirty thousand for water main work that is no longer needed. The estimate from the school is one hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred, which includes E L A and a ten percent contingency. There will be some additional engineering costs, but not to exceed the original estimate. Funds will be allocated from the water for the water main work and street maintenance and reserves for other portion. What other, my question, I guess, only one, is Jenna, what other engineering are you expecting to be?
Sean and I actually kind of talked about this, but there will be some for the surveying, which actually comes from the the high school's engineer. They'll be doing the surveying and stuff. And then, as far as checking things during construction and everything.
But when you say not to exceed original estimate, are we talking about your original estimate? Not to exceed the hundred and ninety?
That's what we had put in there. The, this is more, S E H is not really, we went through the school's engineer to say. So I'm going to do a lot of the inspections and stuff like that, cuz we're not having street project. So we're not gonna have an inspector down here. So to cut costs down. The only addition we put in there were if we need some extra advice or whatever, and as we're going through the stuff. So we don't anticipate a lot, but we wanted to put something in there just to cover our tracks, give a worst case scenario.
And for clarification, not the costs being allocated from the water main, but then previously, there wasn't water main work. There is some work, we just aren't replacing the main. We're going to remove the hydrant, and then they're going to do downward end cap and just abandon that main. It's not necessary. So, there's a little bit of work there.
Any other questions or discussion? Other than the motion we're looking for is to approve or deny the alleyway project adjacent to the school. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let it carries. Next item will be swimming pool maintenance, replacement of the vacuum. Swimming pool vacuum, the new pool vacuum is needed. The old equipment is becoming obsolete. There are numerous hoses and attachments to get out, and multiple employees are needed to operate it. A new filter, which is a hundred and fifty dollars, is needed every year. Additionally, other vacuum parts are fairly due to age and use. This new vacuum will save us time and expense. It only needs one person to operate. It will clean the entire pool in a couple hours, as well as clean the sides of the pool. The new vacuum's capabilities will enable staff and accessories of the pool that are difficult to get at. Cost of the vacuum from Thatcher Pools and Spas is four thousand nine hundred forty-nine ten cents. Pool has funds in their capital budget to cover this. Questions? Discussion on this? Frank?
No questions.
Council action requested then, would it be approved or deny the pool vacuum replacement from Thatcher Pools and Spas?
Do you wanna make sure that it doesn't raise any of the costs of the treats at the pool?
Nope.
Do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve then. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let it carry also. Next one is rescheduled May twenty-fourth council meeting because of special primary election. Due to the special primary election to be held for egg adorns position, the scheduled meeting for Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, will need to change to either May twenty-third, Monday, or Wednesday, May twenty-fifth. One other option is to keep at the twenty-fourth, but we won't start till eight P M. Council actions to change to May twenty-fourth council meeting to, what do you guys feel is gonna work the best for everybody?
If you can promise there's only one thing on the agenda, I can agree. But otherwise, I'd say Monday would be my first choice.
Monday at seven?
I don't have my work calendar for me, but that would be my first choice.
Any other discussion on it?
No matter. What day's Memorial?
Oh, is that Memorial Day?
Memorial Day's late, thirtieth.
I just wanna look at the calendar, too. That's the fourth Monday of the month. God, the Monday works for me.
That works for you?
Yeah, it's weird, so the fourth Monday falls the same week as the fourth Tuesday? That was good deductive reasoning. Nice job, Charlie.
It looks like we're going, we're leaning towards Monday. Is that what I'm hearing from the council?
Should work.
Sure.
Alright, so somebody make a motion to change it to Monday, May twenty-third, seven P M.
I'll do. Motion to move it to the Monday.
Alright, motion's been made, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, Monday it is, and... Alright, last item under motions and general business, looks like this is just a discussion item for right now. It's the city hall east alley, the alley right here that runs between Brimar and our street hall, all the way back to the Elentors Mercy Home. That was part of this year's project, correct? And that can be pulled out and bid separately?
Correct. So...
And the estimate was about what on that now?
Still over three hundred. Well...
There's a water main in there, correct?
There's a water main in there that would be replaced. We've had recent breaks in the area. We would also be abandoning part of the actually has a deficiency in it, but it's not needed. So that was in the plans. And then it includes a connection trail around the pond. So the majority of those items, I was just in a meeting today talking about what items out there are the biggest increases in cost right now, and the majority of those items are not included on that list.
One thing with that watering there, we've had several breaks there over the last past few years, and that is a shallow watering. It's only like four feet deep, so we have to insulate over the top of that, with that, with that main through there.
When can we bid then? How soon can we bid that?
How soon? We would have to come next council meeting and request for authority to advertise. And then, it would be... If you wanna move that meeting back to Tuesday or Wednesday, then we could be awarding it that day. Otherwise, we can't award it until June.
If you wanna do what?
The meeting you just moved to on Monday
Oh, it's gonna drop it right?
Has to go back to Tuesday or Wednesday, because I need three weeks from advertisement in the paper, which has only ran on a Tuesday. And before we can open.
Yeah, why don't you change the editing in the paper?
I want it to be ready for every Monday, Scott.
You want to be advertising till July?
Or you could...
What?
Could date.
In fact, I knew that comes up Monday night, doesn't it? Paper?
You have to use the actual publication.
We have to use the actual publication date of the paper, since this is a project that's over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And it needs three weeks from the date published before we can let the bids. So that would be
So can you approve today?
May twenty-fourth, still.
If there is a consensus, we could have at least a motion maybe to approve that tonight.
If there's a consensus and we, well, we need a resolution and a motion to set the bid date, then we can move it up two weeks.
Should be helpful.
Tonight, make the motion.
And Cheryl can find the resolution number, you could assign to your vote, but make it up there.
Yeah, and then, then we could actually, so if you authorize that we advertise next Tuesday, then we could open an award on May tenth. But if we don't do that tonight, then it will, either we have to move that meeting and just move so we can authorize and approve on the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, or we can't authorize until June.
And we're hoping to give them as much flexibility during this construction season, because that usually can reflect on better bid pricing. So the more time they have to...
Who's responsible? Is the city responsible for all that?
Correct.
And nobody else?
This is coming off.
This would have been our portion of costs, even in the one part.
Needs for example.
The other part to this is we would be doing low bid on this one. So the state statute says we can only do one best value bid every year for the first three years that we do best value. So we did one. So we can't do another one. It would be low bid.
What do you think? I'm still a little forward with it. Do you mind? Did you say?
I'm thinking.
What do you think, Mark?
I guess it don't matter to me, there might be some upset people, I want their street done too, but...
You're talking about a street that wasn't gonna be done till next year anyhow. Where are you at this discussion on the phone? Josh?
I'm probably moving ahead, and I think it'd be good to at least get something done this summer. And it's not gonna
We're building an alley.
That's not, we're not doing that, though, it's the district.
We're paying for it. That's all it comes, who pays for it?
That's true. But I think this way, it's not gonna impact any, any people, right?
Yeah.
It's not gonna impact us.
Very, very few. Okay, do you mind?
Ah, yeah, no, I...
What are your concerns?
Well, so it was, it was the whole we can't, we have to do a little bid. And we gotta start getting a little bid for various reasons.
Yeah, we don't have any choice.
Yeah, no, we don't.
Even if you go next year?
I mean, I guess, even though, so this is a small project, so...
Well, if you bid it all together at the other road, otherwise it'd be two.
You'd put it, that's what we would do.
Yeah, so either, either way, we would have to do this one.
You got a motion? Move forward?
I'll move to move forward.
Second?
I'll second that.
You got a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let it carries.
And just to clarify, that is to advertise next Tuesdays?
Yep.
There will be a resolution assigned to it, the number, so...
Alright, that takes us out of motions and general business and puts us into mayor's staff consulting reports. Tonight, the city of Sturfield, we'd like to send your sympathy to the families of Ron Olson, Irene Call, Vernon Anderson, James Wallace, Helen Holtop, Carol Nelson, Bobby Bell, and Barbara Grover, passed away, and we had her services here, we did one. The great contribution she made to our city, too. Sons of the American Legion will be holding their annual Easter egg hunt this Saturday, starting at ten A M. Use that up to the Legion.
S Y A A Shandirk.
S Y A A Shandirk, alright. Sturfield area churches will be holding their Good Friday workshop at the Civic Center this Friday at eleven M, eleven K M, excuse me. The Dad's Belgian Waffle and Sausage Breakfast will be held on Sunday, April twenty-fourth, at the American Legion. That's put under the lines. Now, we are seeking applicants to fill our pool positions this summer. Jake will be at the job fair on April twentieth at the high school. Stop by and drop your app off, they can drop them off here too, can't they? Right at City Hall. Don't forget, our citywide garage sale will be May fifth through the seventh. When we get done with that, they're followed up by our citywide cleanup days, which will be Saturday, May fourteenth, from eight A M till noon. And Wednesday, May eighteenth, from three P M to seven P M. And because of an oversight of mine last meeting, I didn't get to introduce the man behind the camera. We have a new one, Wyatt. Stand up a second, so we can all see ya. This is the man that does it for us now, does our camera and sound work, and makes us all look good. I thank you for that, Wyatt. And from mayor, council, and city staff, and entire city of Sturfield, to the entire city of Sturfield, Happy Easter. Make it a blessed day, spend some time with your family. Hopefully, we can enjoy some decent weather this weekend, Ford. That's all I've got from here. That'll take us on to the city administration report.
Reports in your package. To add is actually an extra item. The county is completing the redistricting process. And so most of the recent news has been about the city of Rochester's redistricting. Well, now they finally got the proposed plan for the countywide area. And they're gonna be sending those maps to us here at city hall, at the library tomorrow, and or on the fourteenth. And so they'll be available for public review. They're also asking if the public does have any comments to get those in. There's gonna be some kind of comment card that they're gonna have available there. And then those get turned in next week on the nineteenth, because there's a countywide public hearing that they're able to accept comments from our citizenry on the proposed redistricting. So we'll have those maps available here, or at the library. If you get questions from citizens, they can review them there. And then you can also contact the county, too. Elections area and planning and
Alright, thank you, Bill. Any questions for administrator? Thanks, Bill. That takes us to finance director Carla, you got a report?
Just an update, I'm working with the auditors, getting the two thousand twenty-one audit completed. I have asked for a date, so we know when we have the preliminary audit to go through, then we'll set a finance meeting, and then from there, we will get the date set for Andrew to come to council and present.
Any questions for finance director? Alright, thank you, Carla. That'll take us to public works director, report, Sean.
The report's on there. The one thing I wanted to touch on was I've been working on getting numbers for our ponds. We had some ponds that we were looking at trying to improve the water quality in Georgetown Pond, that was a regional pond being one of them. The pricing we've got, we looked at, we had set aside thirty thousand dollars to do a couple of ponds. But in looking at the size of these ponds, it's going to take probably more than that. And looking at the pricing, we pulled up what our other fountain does, and the other pond runs a one horsepower pump over there. And it averages five hundred dollars a month while the pump is running, for the runtime over there. If we do the Georgetown Pond, it's gonna be around seventeen thousand dollars for the pumps themselves. And then it's an additional probably thousand dollars a month around the two pumps. And that'll be a monthly electricity bill. We looked into other areas of doing aeration, which would be significantly cheaper, but because the pond is only a three and a half foot deep pond, they recommend the fountain instead of aeration. We're also laying chemical treatment, having someone come down and go through us with a plan, as far as what we can do with chemical treatment on it, to see what that route is. Just wanted to give you guys some information, what we're looking at, if you have some feedback now, is what you're thinking. If fountain's gonna be too expensive to consider, or is it something we wanna consider? What route do you want me to go, or are you leaning towards? I'll still follow through on the chemical treatment that we've got coming. Any feedback from you guys, or I'll just keep getting all the numbers and run back at the end and throw it out there and say these are all the numbers once I am...
Anybody got anything for Sean? Want to run all the numbers by first, before we go?
Probably so.
I still like the phones, but I guess, I know we gotta look at the Bryson stuffs.
And I could care less either way, I just...
So to run one fountain is, it's a thousand bucks per fountain?
It's five hundred bucks per month. But on the fountain over at Florence, the fountain over here would be the same size, but we would need two of them, cuz it's a bigger, it's an acre and a half pond, as opposed to three quarter, not even three quarters, maybe over Florence. So you need two fountains to do the job adequately in that size pond.
That makes a huge, I mean, it keeps everything moving and, I mean, for the most part, or do you not see a huge difference, or?
Well, they say that you still need some chemical treatment, but that, that does, I mean, I've been watching videos and trying to learn as much of this stuff, cuz this isn't my expertise, so I've been trying to learn. And I see bubblers are an effective way, but it's usually on a deeper pond, because of the different strata, or the layers of the the water, some of it becomes stagnant, the bottom becomes anaerobic, and the aeration keeps it all mixing, so it keeps it healthier and whatnot. So, because they're such shallow ponds, the three and a half feet deep, a fountain circulates that water and hits all depths, and it does a better job of forcing the stuff to the sides out there.
So Sean, that seventeen thousand is for both pumps?
These are two pumps, they're about eight to nine thousand per pump.
That's without a pump.
The first one, and that's, and we'd have electrical installation on that, like getting power to it, which I don't even know how far I got, Matt will work it. The first one, and that's, and we'd have electrical installation on top of that, getting power to it, which I don't even know how far I got Matt Mo working on getting the numbers for that, so that would be on top of it.
Jason, you got any leads on that one they took out of our pond?
It's not posted on Facebook? I think maybe we need to wait for some numbers.
Yeah, we'll have to, you gave us something to think about now, Sean, so use the numbers while we think.
Well, I, the one place that does the pumps, they said they wouldn't come down and go through a chemical maintenance on them, and get pricing on that too, or we just treat them with chemicals every month that don't have a fountain out there to help with it? Just, like I said, it's all learning for me, so we'll jump in and see if we can figure out.
Any questions for Sean? Sean, I had nothing to do with that flower planner in front of City Hall.
Wow, and you were the first one we thought of.
Well, I've been careful since. Thank you. Janet, city engineers report.
Nothing to report.
Okay. All the engineering's going good. Alright. Nate's not here, so the library director, Vance is not here, pool director's not here. That takes us committee, commission, and board reports, chamber of commons. You got the April newsletter? Lot of stuff in that newsletter, it'll prove soon, you get a second. Alan, do you want to say anything at all, or? Alright. E D A, H R A?
Meetings from, uh, meetings, minutes from the last meeting are in there, we have another meeting next Tuesday.
Yep, finance?
Nothing.
Library?
Nothing.
Park Board?
I'm ministering there in the next meeting.
First and last, one thing that I worry. You need a couple of hires.
Well, you don't, I haven't heard anything, did he start? Your, your, the latest guy started already?
Yeah, yeah, Logan started last Thursday.
Land zoning?
Oh, we had the three things in our agenda tonight? I don't think so.
Public safety? Do you want to add anything, Jason? Calls, service are in there, but do you think they have?
I'm glad you had that. No new, no new news to offer, but I'll be out if you guys have any questions.
Alright. Thank you. Public works? Ready?
Uh, minutes in your packet from the January meeting?
Holkop?
Just three minutes there, um, nothing new or additional.
Nothing for burnt trains, advisory committee? No report. Communications none denied, that'll take us to our open mic. City council welcomes and encourages participation with community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be burnt to city business and must adhere to the data privacy rules. No employee's name may be used. Please do not expect to ask from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to four men, speakers be recognized only once. At this time, we ask anyone who would like to address the city council, to please step up to the podium, state your name and address. And I think we have Mr. Brian Mueller here.
Yes.
Would you like to step up?
If I could, please, take a minute of your time. My name is Brian Mueller, I'm from Rochester Township. Been on the Rochester Town Board eighteen years, and the Blue Heron Rookery did me in, my seat was up, and I found I had a lot of free time. So I talked with Matt Flynn, and he is obviously not running again, and I would like to, uh, take his spot on seat four for county commissioner. Like I said, I'm from Rochester Township, and I do have a farming background. I'm a self-employed, heavy equipment mechanic, so I've got some idea with business and stuff, so. Just need to get my name out, and that's what I'm bugging, so I'm hitting all the townships and finding out District Four is a really big district.
I didn't follow that, uh, Blue Heron Bill that closely, which side of that rookery were you on, for or against?
Actually, I, now that's kind of, uh, it's not that cut and dried, I could say.
You're willing to approve the development there though?
Yeah.
Which is the general development plan?
Right. But now the thing was, was no, I didn't want to see anything happen to the rookery, but the fact of the matter is, it's private property. He was able to do what he wants with the property, can cut, log it, clear cut the woods, whatever he wanted to do, and the problem was, is we had a lot of people that didn't agree with that, but it almost comes down to owners' rights as far as that goes, so.
Anywhere it came down to, I just want to know where you stood. Because I am part of that.
Yeah, that was.
Down without him, the farm, so.
That's kind of where that, that's at, that's still an ongoing issue with litigation and stuff too, so. Anyway, that's my spiel.
Any other questions for Brian, ones up there?
You, uh, do these guys have contact information somewhere? Because I highly suspect there will be questions between now and election time.
No, I don't have. Do you do? Phone and email?
You're, uh, yeah, this seat is going to be, in my opinion, very important, so, like, I mean, just by makeup of, I work in Rochester for the police department, I worked up there for twenty-four years. I've seen a lot of changes going on with that. Change can be good, change can be not so good. That's, you have, you have a lot of weight, I mean, you've got big shoes to fill, you know that, obviously.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I believe part of that means you got to run the chain gang at the varsity football game.
I don't know if we're good, but.
Someone's going to need help.
Free admission.
Yeah, there you go. Oh, good point.
Other than that, uh. Fight for thirty-five, over thirty-five years, so I kind of tend to stay with one thing.
That's a good way to put it. I tried that once, so. Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, thank you.
That brings us to the final motion of the evening. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Wait a second.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourn.